That IT guy doesn't like me.
You guys are all set. All right, I'll call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, January 25th, 2023. All persons interested in and/or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals are hereby notified pursuant to section 11 of chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And all amendments thereto, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, at the time indicated. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via channel 18. It may be viewed via the channel 18 website at http://bowlen slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of barnstable dot us slash cablecast public site slash real-time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The zoom link is https colon slash slash town of barnstable dash us dot zoom dot us slash j slash eight six four three eight nine four eight nine one, or by calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, and entering the meeting ID eight six four three eight nine four eight nine zero one. Applicants, representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely. It may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted to, uh, submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot brigham at town dot barnstable dot ma dot us. Though they may be displayed for remote public access viewing copies of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two, or emailing anna dot brigham at town dot barnstable dot ma dot us. I will call the meeting to order with an introduction of board members. Herb Bodenseek.
I am present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Todd Willantis. It's not present. Mark Hanson. Is not present. Uh, Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
All right. Uh, notice of recording, please note this meeting is recorded broadcast on channel 18 in accordance with MGL chapter 30A, section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting, and please make their presence known. Being none, we will assume no one is recording. Uh, first order of business, we have minutes from January 11th, 2023. Um, take a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All right, roll, call, vote. Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
Uh, abstain, I wasn't there.
Aaron Webb.
Uh, I approve.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. Uh, so the minutes are approved. Uh, we have no old business tonight, so we go right on to new business. Uh, an appeal number 2022 dash zero five seven, Perry S. Wentworth has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty-seven, two C four accessory dwelling unit. The applicant seeks to construct a detached tube accessory dwelling unit which exceeds the allowable as-of-right square footage. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is eighteen hundred and seventy-six square feet, and the as-of-right size is nine hundred square feet, thereby exceeding the allowable size by nine hundred and seventy-six square feet. The subject property is located at sixteen Wally Court, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map three two four as parcel zero two zero. The property is located, the residence B RV zoning district. Uh, so sitting on this will be everyone present, one, two, three, four, yeah, uh, everyone present. Uh, Herb Bodenseek, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Denise Johnson, and myself. Um, Attorney Lawler, I believe it's over to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, great to see you. Happy New Year. Um, yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I think you, you were all involved in the, um, the concept and creation of ADUs and, um, provided in the regulations that they're matter, you know, allowed as a matter of right, uh, at nine hundred square feet, but that is allowable under a special permit, um, if greater. Now, the situation in here is that my client is a longtime resident of, um, um, of Barnstable, uh, mainly summer, or in the summer. Um, she's in her seventies, though I'm not sure she'd be happy that I shared that. And, um, really, the issue here is she needs a home, um, a second home on her property, an ADU, uh, because going into her later years, the intention here now is to have one of her children, one of her daughters move down and take care of her, or if it were, if that didn't work out, some other, um, caretaker, uh, later on. Uh, with respect to zoning requirements, uh, though the property is greater than the nine hundred square feet is allowed under the statute, I mean, under the bylaw, um, two forty forty-seven dash, uh, dot two, um, it complies with all other zoning requirements, setbacks, uh, bedrooms, border health, everything else is in full compliance based upon the size of the lot. So really, um, her, uh, her daughters have children, so if they're gonna be here later on taking care of her, there needs to be room, um, you know, for the children. And it is, in keeping with the neighborhood, um, I have Craig Ashworth here from EB Norris. I think you're all familiar with him and the type of homes he builds. He will build a home that will be absolutely, and you've seen the plans, in keeping with the neighborhood. It's in keeping with the intent of the bylaw. It's certainly not more detrimental to the neighborhood, actually will improve the neighborhood. Um, the, you know, this is a, you know, uh, the basic, you know, the basis of, um, ADUs is to provide housing on Cape Cod, uh, and one of the real needs of, you know, Cape Codders, we, we have a very high percentage of people that are older, uh, and it's for care. And, you know, I was having a conversation with Craig earlier, uh, this afternoon about, you know, the demographics and how, um, and the cost of healthcare and how we're going back to the way, uh, things used to be where people are taking care of their own parents in a, in a larger way, um, which is a wonderful thing. And this allows her to stay in her home and have the dignity of her home. I mean, she's very well now. Don't get me wrong. There's no, there's not, this is on public television. This is really planning for the future. Um, so, um, you know, that's the issue, and, and that's the intent of the statute. Uh, there certainly is room on the lot for this particular structure, um, because again, it meets all side setbacks and, and everything else. And, um, we would ask that you approve it. Um, I can get into greater detail, but I don't want to waste your time. I think I've spoken enough, uh, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions you might have, or Mr. Ashworth's here to answer any questions with respect to the building. Um, I think if you see the plans and everybody here has seen Mr. EB Norris's work before, Mr. Ashworth's work before, um, he builds beautiful homes, and, um, here we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Lawler. Um, I, one question I have, I, in, in what we have in the later, there's no plans or elevations of what this is gonna look like. Is there any, I mean, can we get a description or Anna, were there plans that I missed on the thing?
I submitted plans when I filed the application.
Uh, they should be in the application. I'm gonna open it up right now.
Let me, I can, I could probably email them to Anna in two seconds if we can.
I see all the, I see all the floor plans.
Oh, I don't, sorry, mine only was going to three pages. Now it's going, okay, now it's going to eight. Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. For a second there, I'm like, oh, I think I messed up.
They're there.
Okay, they're there. Sorry, my bad. Uh, do any other board members have questions for the applicant?
Herb Bodenseek.
Uh, Herb.
I'm wondering why you didn't go with a family apartment, root on this. Um.
I think that the, my clients', um, daughters have children, and I think the ADU would, you know, the separate, uh, structure is, uh, is what they wanted. Again, it's fitting with the property. Um, it, it's just, again, it's, you know, with the housing shortage, and then also, you know, for privacy issues, if, for instance, there is, um, you know, if children do come down, um, it, it just provides a little bit of separation, um, you know, their main dwelling, if someone had to, it, you, you move in at some point in time, that's always possible, but this provides a kind of a unique opportunity for her family to be there and, you know, be a few feet apart. It's, um, for both, if, if, for, you know, it's a quality of life issue and a personal choice issue, I would say, Herb, based upon that issue.
There are a number of grandchildren that would be down in spurts to, you know, with the, with the daughters, and, uh, sometimes a little bit of elbow room's a beautiful thing, um, you know.
Could, could you identify yourself and what you're at?
My name, my name is Craig Ashworth.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, my name is Craig Ashworth, EB Norris. I'm the builder on the property. The, um, you know, it's a, it's a very large, very large lot. I would say that the house occupies a substantially smaller ratio than the average house in the neighborhood. Uh, most of the other houses are built out to, almost to the setbacks, except where conservation doesn't allow. Um, the first floor area is, uh, not much over the nine hundred, and it's essentially a one and a half story, uh, with the majority of the second, with all of the second floor space being under the main roof.
And in, in that area, the main is two, two-story structures, so again, it's in keeping with the neighborhood and keeping with the zoning. Um, and again, yeah, the, yeah, the, the footprint is under a thousand feet. It's, it's not.
Mr. Ashworth, um, the, the main house is under construction now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so she's not living in the main house at the present time?
No, no, it was recently acquired.
Understood.
Attorney Law, I think to Herb's question was, why are we not doing this under the family apartment, um, by law, as it seems that that's its intended use?
Well, I mean, again, I also said that it may, at some point in time, I mean, the ADU is intended for, you know, housing, you know, if it's not for the, at some point in time, maybe it won't be family, maybe it will be caregivers or something of that, or, or some other family. I mean, it, you know, we have a housing shortage in, uh, in, in Barnstable, in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts for that matter. And the, you know, the purpose of this bylaw was to provide, um, you know, housing for individuals and the ability to have more than one, uh, dwelling on a lot. Now, there is a, there is the issue with respect to the size requirement, uh, but in the, the, um, town council, when they approved the bylaw, they knew that certain people would go before the board or want something bigger than nine hundred square feet, and they put a provision in there for that, and that provision being a special permit. And the special permit, um, you know, requirements are, is it more detrimental? You know them. I'm not gonna go through them. You know them inside and out. Um, and, you know, based upon this particular lot, the size of the lot, the fact that the footprints under a thousand square feet, um, the issue is, this is really, you know, certainly teed up for an ADU as a matter of right, and because of the size of the lot, the neighborhood making it larger, um, is not more detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood. It's not. And it's, it's in keeping with the zoning, it's in keeping with, uh, the lot coverages in the area. This is a, a, an area of the Cape that's been developed for a long time, and, um, and that's what they're looking for. Uh, the, uh, as Craig said, certain privacy issues, people don't want to necess, I don't, I don't believe you can have a family apartment that's, I think it has to be connected. I'm, I may be mistaken, but.
So Attorney Lawyer Lawler, the, her family will be the first renters for the first twelve months?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, yeah, so Attorney Law, so, so one family member is gonna sign a lease?
That's understood.
With this Wentworth every year, that's the plan.
I don't know if they're gonna actually, it's their mother. I don't know if they're gonna actually pay money, but they're gonna live there. If you can sign a lease for a dollar, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wishing to comply with the bylaw.
This is not, this is not intended to be.
Rental housing.
This is not intended to be rented out at the moment.
That's the intent of the ADU bylaw, though. The intent of the ADU bylaw is to create rental housing.
I understand that, but at the same, they're intending to use it, right? I can certainly create a lease and have the, have the children rent it. Um.
So Attorney Lawler, what you're saying with, with as few words as possible is that her relatives will be the first leases for the first twelve months?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we will do a lease, and I can provide that to the town.
All right, do any other board members have questions for the applicant before we open public comment? Denise, Herb?
I'm just wondering, under the ADU, what are the restrictions on an ADU? Is it supposed to be family occupied, or is it, uh, people, it can be a rental unit, I guess, under the ADU, correct?
It's required to be.
It has to be a long-term rental unit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have any family requirements or?
And I apologize.
Family relief for that matter.
But it's supposed to be a rental unit, okay?
Yes, and that's why we asked the question of, will there be a lease in place? Because?
We'll, yeah, I will provide, I will provide a lease. I will provide a lease to the, um, to the town upon construction. It won't be, it won't be until probably the fall because of construction, but.
I, I, I can speak for Perry. We've discussed this, and she's very clear in the understanding that this is to be subject to long-term lease.
Hmm.
All right, so let's go ahead and open public comment. I think there's some butters.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So on a plan you submitted, the site plan, page four shows, um, proposed existing growing, proposed pool, proposed guest house. Is that, is where, is that where we're talking about here?
I think it was misnamed as an ADU as a guest house, yes.
Okay, so thirty by forty is what's, the point, this plan shows, but is that accurate, Mr. Ashworth?
It's thirty-six by thirty.
Okay, so is the plan we're looking at then not the plan, or, because this shows proposed guest house thirty by forty?
Uh, I ran the calculations on it before I did this, because I was looking at the first floor area, and with the entry and powder room, I came up with eleven hundred and eighty-six square feet for the first floor under roof. And, uh, I, you know, I would have to go back. There have not really been any changes to this plan, and I think what I looked at was very clearly. I, I really want to say it was thirty deep and thirty-six long, the length of the main ridge, and then there is a, a, a little projection, I think, that's five feet by maybe fourteen feet, which is the entry and the powder room. Um, I, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's, I guess, I guess what I'm just confused about is that the site plan labels it as a proposed guest house.
I think.
I, I don't understand why it's not just considered to be a guest house on this site plan that was either approved by the town for the, you know, re, you know, the construction of what's currently happening. I, you know, it just doesn't seem like it falls under the ADU, but, but I, again, I'm happy to open up.
I mean, it's, it's, it's mislabeled as a guest house on, on the plan. I mean, it's intended as an ADU. It's intended to have the daughter move down and, and, and take care of her mother going forward, and there will be a lease in place. Um, after that, it would be intended to be leased to whomever. Uh, the initial purpose is, because it's difficult to find people, uh, this is really planning, you know, health planning, you know, whether the daughter, if the daughter can't do it, then there would be leased to probably somebody who, um, would be taking care of the family, um, of, of, of the owners, uh, later on in life, and then where they would, you know, be paid to take care of them and also provide, um, um, living arrangements. That's the intent. That's always been the intent.
Yeah, understood, right?
And that's, and I think that's consistent with ADU, because people who generally provide healthcare can't afford homes on Cape Cod, and that's consistent with healthcare. Right now, it's intended, um, she's in her early seventies, and I wasn't gonna come up here and lie to the board and say, the family's not gonna use her right off the, the bat. It is the intent of the family, the daughter to, to move in there initially, but if, if things get, depending on what happens with life, hopefully, you know, she's, um, up and able for a long, long time, um, you know, but that's the intent, is to have this as a rental unit, and for purposes of providing home healthcare, a place to live, and the age to move next door. That's the intent.
I guess I have, um. I think, you know, I'd like to just speak to the, the label on the plan. That was labeled by a drafts person who put this together, and, uh, I, I honestly, uh, guest house is a term that we often see and often use in many of our homes, and I'm sure it crept in there just because, you know, there will be guests there. But it is a long-term lease, and I can speak for Perry, uh, that her intention is that this is for her family use for the foreseeable future.
Through a lease agreement.
Pardon me?
Through a lease agreement.
Absolutely, absolutely. And she's well aware of that. We've discussed it.
But the intent, again, is for healthcare purposes.
Yeah.
Which, which, when this was, when the ADU law was done, a lot of the discussions were about the fact that people, working people or family people couldn't afford to live here to take care of, um, parents or non-related persons as they get older, and that was one of the major intents of the ADU bylaw, which to provide housing for them. And that's the, and that is the intent, and it remains the intent.
So is the footprint accurate then, the thirty by forty, or is that not accurate on the plan?
Craig will have to answer that.
You know what? Uh, I am at home. I do not have those plans accessible to me there in my office. Um, I, I would say that, uh, if you wanna, you know, I can only go by what you have in your hands, and I may have forwarded an early copy. Assume that what you have is correct.
I mean, if, if the board would wish to continue this, and I can get a lease in place ahead of time, I'm more than happy to do that as well.
I still want to make findings that aren't accurate, and then you have to come back, because we've made findings on the plans before us. That's the only thing. But let's open public comment and get through this, and then if we need to continue at the end, for, for whatever Anna sort of advises on us there. Um, let's open public comment. I believe we have some people here. Uh, Joy, if you want to go ahead?
Yes, I just have a question. Since this is an accessory unit.
Can you do it for yourself?
Yeah, can you just say your, your name and full name and address?
My name is Joyce McClay.
And where do you live?
I live on eight Wally Court.
Okay.
So my question is, since this is an accessory unit and not a family unit, can it be used as an Airbnb?
There is no intention to use as an Airbnb.
Attorney Lawler, I'll add that to you, but the, the bylaw does restrict it to be year-round, the, the ADU bylaw that would be, to fit in this underneath does restrict it to be a year-round long-term lease.
And we would, in addition to, in addition to.
But it's not, but, excuse me, if it's not a family rental, correct, by what, however the terms are, it could be rented out to not a family. That's what I'm asking.
Correct.
Okay, it can, okay.
But it would, it would have to be long-term. It could be a short-term Airbnb.
Yeah, we would agree to a condition that limits it to long-term rentals, even though it's already in the bylaw.
So it will really not be a family unit, as you're saying, correct? You're saying that, and it, listen, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to get clear with the laws in the town.
The requirement, the requirement for an ADU is that if it's rented, it has to be rented for a minimum of twelve months, regardless of who rents it. Okay? Does that answer your question?
But, but Paul, to that point, either unit could be rented. They could in, in some, you know, in twenty years' time, rent the main house, and someone could live in the guest house or whatever.
Correct. They can rent both of them out, but.
No, they can rent one out. They can't rent both out.
What? Only, only one?
That, my client, the owner has to live in one, and the other one has to be rented out for a minimum of twelve months.
No, that's, that's not what the law says. The zoning law says they both can be rented for minimum of twelve months, but the owner does not have to be on the property, does not have to have to be a renter. Only, excuse me.
No, Paul, that's, that's.
One of them, one of them.
Not the way the ADU bylaw reads. One, one unit can be rented. One has to be occupied.
Yep.
Yeah.
We certainly would agree to that restriction. Uh, I think it's redundant, but we'd certainly agree to it.
Thank you for answering my question.
Um, Mrs. Mizati, did you want to speak to public comment?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, Attorney Boudreau, did you have any questions or comments?
I think he's on the next matter.
I do not. I'm on the next matter.
Okay, um, I have Linda. Linda, your screen's black, but if you want to unmute, if you had a comment. Uh, Mrs. Nightingale, I believe you might be in a butter. Do you have a comment?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments. We were concerned also about the, um, about the renting, so, um, we're kind of happy that that was clarified, and, um.
The size of.
We were concerned about the size, just to make sure that we understood what it was all about. We did talk to Craig Ashworth yesterday, so I think we understand that.
I'm not sure we're clear on the size. I'm not sure they're clear on the size.
My husband, we live next door.
Yeah, we live at twelve Wally Court. I just, I'm not clear on the size, and this was discussed, but I'm not sure I was clear on the size of the, the unit. It, on the plan, it shows thirty by forty and eighteen hundred square feet. Is, so I'm just wondering how.
We've asked for some clarification on that as well. We haven't gotten quite there yet, but we've asked for that as well.
So what I will say, what I will say to that is, the application was for the, uh, you know, the plan that was submitted, and I would suggest that if the, what Craig's talking about is smaller, so if you approve what was submitted, and they build something a little bit smaller, I think that falls within the approvals as a matter of law.
Rick, I will say that your plan is correct, and if your plan that you have in hand that I sent you yesterday, if that's it.
No, you didn't send, I didn't get a plan from you. I, I, I found a plan that was submitted early on in the process.
Okay.
I didn't get anything updated.
There have been no changes to the size of this for months, so, um, I, I would assume that what you have in, on your records as thirty by forty is correct, and I must have misspoke.
So, so how does that translate to eighteen hundred square feet? Because that's twelve hundred square feet.
There's a second floor under a roof. It's net area.
It's not a full second floor. It's a half-second floor, so you have the twelve hundred and plus the six hundred, and that's the eighteen hundred.
Okay.
So half of the, the footprint is the twelve hundred, and the second floor is only half of that, which is, uh, the eighteen hundred. So if it does get approved, I would, you know, ask that, um, or, you know, the, or if there's a motion that, you know, no greater than the plan, and if we make it a little bit smaller, then we're okay.
Okay.
If there's such a motion.
Does that sort of answer your question, Mr. Nightingale?
I guess I was wondering which, you know, which ways the dorm we're gonna face and all that kind of thing, and, uh, but, you know, that, it's not.
Doesn't matter.
A huge structure. Uh, that's all.
And you, and you can see that my, my client's been very proactive to reach out to the neighbors. The neighbors have been very kind.
Excuse me?
I said, um, you've been very thoughtful and, and considerate, the neighbors. Um, you know, to, talking to Craig and, and the responses I heard tonight.
Uh, Ms. Ver, Vercher, are you, did you want to speak to this applicant?
Who am Holly Point.
All right, and then I've got a five oh eight seven six zero 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 five. Did you want to speak to this? All right. Uh, Anna, I don't believe we received any comments in writing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Last call. Anyone want to speak to public comment before we close? Being none, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I can pull.
And a roll call vote on closing public comment. Herb Bodenseek?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
Favor.
And I'm also in favor. Uh, so public comment is closed. We can bring it back to the board for deliberation. Does any board members have any thoughts, or, um, anyone want to make a motion? Does any board members have any thoughts or um, anyone want to make a motion?
I guess I'll.
Go ahead.
Hi. Uh, one concern I had right off the bat was the more than double the uh, nine hundred square foot limit. Um, I think the intent of the zoning board is to let uh, somewhat moderate uh, infractions, if you want to call it that, go, but more than almost two thousand square feet. And then, on another note, you're going to give a two-bedroom, two thousand square foot poolhouse to the Home Health Aid. I find that a little hard to swallow, but let's see what the rest of the board says. Thank you.
It's a pool house?
Not a pool house. It's not.
It's a pool house, please!
It's not. It's not. It's intended, it's not a pool house.
Okay, it's a guest house then. Um.
It's a family, it's an ADU. It's a family apartment, proposed ADU.
I thought this was deliberations with the board.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Herb, I agree. I mean, it is, it is big, again, you know, the intent of council when they approved the ADU was for minor, not to have, not to allow second homes on a property, not to have two houses.
Exactly.
And, you know, we're looking at the plans here. It is, you know, it is a pretty sizable structure, a very comfortable house, not an apartment. I wouldn't call it an apartment. It's, I mean, it's labeled as a guest house, not a guest apartment. Paul or Aaron, Denise, any thoughts or comments here?
Well, I just wish we understood more of the the parameters of the ADU as opposed to doing, as you say, a family addition. I mean, if if the purpose of the ADU was to have smaller units, not to use it as a way to put a second house on the property, then I think that is a concern because it, as in all things, it sets a precedent.
Yeah, exactly. That's my fear. Exactly.
And then the intent of the ADU by council was for sure to fit small apartments onto parcels where they were not noticeable, basically. You know, there was, there was, the entrance should be sort of hidden. It shouldn't really look like a two-family or a um, you know, a second house on a property. So, yeah, I mean, that's the fine line that we're walking here, that we have to decide on. Paul or Aaron, did you have any thoughts?
I guess what concerns me, I guess, is just, is this, if this site plan was submitted for 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 the property um, in the work that's currently being done, was there any conversation? I mean, was, it was clearly approved by the building department, and this might be a question for both Craig Ashworth and Attorney Lawler, but I I I mean, was it approved? I mean, is the work you're doing is part of that, if what we're looking at here? I'm not really quite, I I guess I just don't get it because it, to me, it 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 does fall into the guest house parameters more so than an ADU, and it's hard not to call it a pool house, Attorney Lawler, when the views show from the pool uh, on this, uh, you know, this, uh, the plans you submitted. One of them shows a pool view. It's 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 as if, you know, it was intended to be a guest house, you know? So I, I'm not against it. I'm really not against it. I, you know, and and the size, you know, it does, you know, it does um, beg to question, you know, the nine hundred square feet or, you know, the parameter of less than half of the main dwelling, but both of those are exceeded. So, you know, it's um, but I'm truly not against it. I just, I guess I'm just confused as to why it's being labeled as an ADU and not, as this plan shows, as just a guest house.
I just think when it was drafted, the drafter didn't know what an ADU was. It was a plan, and he just didn't know what to call it, and he called it a guest house. That's all.
I know, but why not, why not submit it to the town as a, just as a guest house? I mean, plenty of properties on Cape Cod have guest houses of this magnitude, of this lot size.
It's intended to be an ADU.
But it's David, but I, I'm sorry, I I don't, I, yeah.
I'm just telling you what my client, I'm telling you what my client told me.
I hear you.
It was the issue of getting older in life, and that was what.
It's a tough sell. I'm just telling you, it's a tough sell as an ADU. It's more so than, I think if it was a guest house and and it was presented that way, I I would have no problem with it, you know, because that's what it is. It's it's, again, I understand what you're saying about the parameters of it being an ADU, and maybe down the road, a health home aide is going to live there, but you readily admitted earlier that there was no, you know, there was not even a lease talked about initially, so that it was solely going to be.
I knew, I knew we had a, we would have done a lease. I just said they're not going to charge a lot of money. It would have been a lease.
I know, the lease could be for zero. Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, there'd be, you know, there's, it it, again, it's meant for the daughter and the daughter and her family to come down and stay.
We could have got up here and said it was, you know, for, you know, we had people intended and, you know, not family members, and, you know, my client's very honest and.
And I, I, I'm not, nobody's, nobody's blaming it or accusing anybody of being dishonest. I just, I don't know.
May I speak?
Go ahead, Craig.
This is board discussion. Thank you. Um, I think when this was first conceived, uh, the idea was, uh, I don't think that the definition was totally firmed up because this was months and months and months ago. And the attempt to adhere to the intent of what was at that time an evolving ADU language was for a two-bedroom, and this is only two bedrooms upstairs. And when you look at the size of the kitchen downstairs, it's small. It's small. There's, I would say about twenty percent of the first floor is open screen porch. Um, the side of the house does not face the pool. Uh, I believe that that is mislabeled, and I made that notation on plans sent out yesterday. Um, the gable end is facing the pool. It is looking, uh, it is basically close to parallel to the pool. It is looking to the west, the long wall with the screen porch, uh, afternoon suns, and it also seemed to fit the property well, given the uh, conservation requirements. So that, and that's just a little bit of backstory there, and I think that uh, some of the labeling, uh, I probably should have edited it. I did not put that language on the plan. So, sorry.
Attorney Lawler or Craig, can you just give us a quick, like, summary of the chronological of these plans? So this was submitted to the town for the construction that's that's act- acted?
Probably last.
Currently, with there.
Yes, yes. It was because there was a conservation filing, and we put it all on one document rather than go back continually to conservation.
And so then did the building commissioner send this to us then? He rejected the guest house because you wanted bedrooms there? Initially, there weren't bedrooms, or why?
No, no.
What was the chronological?
It has always been shown in this form, and really, we can't get to zoning board until it is denied. And, you know, so he did what I would expect him to do, is deny it and then bring it out to this discussion. I seem to think that the special permit seemed, uh, it was spoken, and there have been many conversations that this gave you ongoing control over the property should there be a change of owner or use. Um, you know, I I don't know, we probably, I I I I don't know whether a guest house that I've, there are a lot of them. Hyannis Port is full of them. Oysterville's full of them. Centerville is full of them. Uh, I'm sure there's a few. There, there are some on C Street. Um, so it's not out of keeping in the neighborhood. When this, I've been involved with this property since nineteen seventy-one, and when this was originally purchased by Brad and Ruth Norris, it was two separate lots, and uh, because at the time they bought it, it was an informal sale, they merged both, and they lost the individual identity of the lot. So it basically became one lot. Uh, and nobody's contesting that or looking for relief on that basis. I I think that there was an intent to uh, conform to what was in the works as an ADU at the time. And that was the two bedrooms and the, basically, they're held up by a living room. It's a, it's a living room.
Herb, do any other board members have questions? Or we're in deliberation right now, so, uh, Paul, we haven't heard much from you. What are your thoughts here?
Well, I I mean, the whole issue in front of us is, is I believe whether or not, it's it's not whether it's an ADU or not, the whole issue in front of us is the size. Um, and that's what the special permit is requesting. Um, I agree with Aaron. This is a huge, uh, th- this is a huge building that is beyond the size of the main house. The main house is undergoing construction. Um, I don't know why it's not bigger or not, but if that's the request of the homeowner um, and the purpose of of the zoning board appeals is to approve anything over nine hundred square feet, um, then I guess I would be in favor of uh, of um, of the outsized uh, of the appeal.
Okay, yeah. When, like, when council approved the ADU bylaw, they put in there that, you know, there could be exceptions that would come before us. So here's another one of these before us as an exception. We have to decide if this is something we want to allow. Um, Denise, do you have any other thoughts?
Well, I I just, I go back to saying, why isn't it a guest house? I mean, I I think if we're going to be looking at, you know, twenty, thirty of these over the next few years, uh, do we have a grasp of what what it is we're supposed to be approving? And I thought the ADU intent was to have small units within a property to have additional housing, not to have another home of equal proportion to what the original one is. That's my question, because I'm I'm more concerned about the precedent than I am about the individual thing. I mean, if this were a request for a guest house, fine, but why are we using the ADU thing?
Well, because the law says that they can appeal to our zoning board for anything over nine hundred square feet, which is what they're doing.
Well.
And it is an ADU. It's not a guest house, but I, I will say.
I don't know what, I don't know how you can say that, that it's not a guest house. This is being used.
There's nothing in the zoning law that defines a guest house that I know of, okay? It's not a family apartment. They're coming up with, they're coming up with an ADU. So that's what we have to deal with. Are we going to approve?
I mean, it could have come before us as a family apartment, a detached family apartment, which would come before us as well.
But it didn't. It's it's in front of us as an ADU, and they want a special permit to go over nine hundred square feet, which is the way the law is written.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
So wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Our choice is not what it's, what it what it could be. The choice is, it's an ADU, which is what they want, and they want to go over nine hundred square feet. That's our decision. Yes or no?
Mr. Chairman, if it may, based upon the discussion.
Go ahead, Attorney Lawler.
Uh, based upon the discussion of the board, I would add, I would ask preferably that um, we we will be allowed to continue the matter and maybe readdress some of these issues and come back and reopen public comment if that's possible. I'd rather do that than withdraw and file a new application. And I would ask that the uh, board continue it for, say, two meetings out. I will meet with Mr. Ashworth and go over some of these concerns that you have, and I think that that would be a better approach at this time, if the board would be so inclined. Um, if they aren't agreeable to a continuance, I I'm going to request that um, a withdrawal um, uh, with prejudice, I mean, without prejudice, of course. Um, and um, and 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 come back on a later day. I I understand some of the concerns, and I'll take responsibility. Some of those questions I need to ask my client, and um, that would be the request of the applicant at this time.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'll make.
Make a motion to.
Yep, go ahead.
Go ahead, Aaron.
No, I I was going to do the same, so after you.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Before we make the motion, can I just request a couple things? Please look into a family unit as an option. Uh, the requirements are kind of similar, but they're looser. Um, you know, it's supposed to be fifty percent maximum of the square footage of the uh, main dwelling. Um, I'd feel that I'd be happy to give a little bit of leeway on that over um, I think the damage this would do to the accessory dwelling unit um, future, and it, I think it's against the the whole idea of that, and I'd rather see it as a family apartment. And I think you can easily fit the criteria. I think we'd have to uh, make one family person the uh, uh, occupant, even though that may not be the case a hundred percent of the time. Um, but I'd be, I'd be really happy to entertain that. Thank you.
But the issue will remain the same. The issue would be, in a family apartment, it says less, no more than fifty percent of the of the prime residence. So it's still the same issue. This is two thousand.
But Herb, I, but Paul and Herb, I I agree that the family apartment has more of the, an ending, you know, we have to think, we have one owner in front of us right now, but we have to think, where's the, where are these dwellings going to be in thirty years and fifty years and eighty years? You know, the family apartment has some more strict guidelines that will, you know, have to be taken into account by a new owner. An ADU, we kind of have set, an apartment can be there forever and ever. They can be rented. You know, we sort of have completed a two-family.
I can't, I I don't know that the law, I mean, I can't think that far. The law doesn't go there. The law says if you want more than nine hundred square feet, it comes for us to say yea or nay. I don't care about ten years in the future, what's going to happen. I I can't see that far. It's not relevant to the law. In a family apartment, you're going to have the same issue if he comes in with a family apartment, because a family apartment limits it to fifty percent of the square footage of the main residence. We're going to be arguing the same point. So to come back in with a family apartment versus an ADU, to me, we're going to be talking about the same thing. That's irrelevant. But I think what we're all talking about.
Apartment has to be recertified, has to, has to be recertified. A family apartment has recertification on it. I believe it's annual basis.
Yes, so what? It's still size.
So it it expires. It expires. You know, a a future buyer could have to remove it because they can't comply with it.
So that, so that doesn't meet the needs of the, or the intention of the owner. If she wants somebody there or take, do you plan for somebody there in case she needs help? I mean, uh, you know, we're talking about the size here, folks. Let's keep that in mind, okay?
And I, and I, even though I withdrew, and I, I respectfully say one thing about the precedent. I think this is an individual case, and the special permit requirements are, are, you know, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? Is it consistent with zoning? Is it consistent with the neighborhood? Those are the real, respectfully, it's not precedent, it's, is this really consistent with the zoning bylaw? And and that, and we're going to look at, we're going to take all those uh, thoughts and and and, you know, and very, you know, and very um, well-thought-out questions and concerns by the board. We're going to take all those into concern, uh, into um, into play and come back with you with a, with, you know, with a, with probably something a little bit different.
All right, so let's, I'm going to make a motion that we continue to. It's February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, okay? Anna, Attorney Lawler.
Um, let me look.
We have, next meeting's February eighth, and then it's the twenty-second or March eighth.
Craig, is that enough time?
Two weeks out.
Uh, a month out.
That, uh, that will be fine.
Okay.
So February twenty-second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue uh, uh, appeal number twenty twenty-two dash zero five seven.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before you go there, I will not be uh, available for that meeting.
Okay, what's the next March meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I won't be there, so.
Uh, why don't we do March eighth then?
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue appeal number twenty twenty-two dash zero five seven to March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any a second?
I'll second that.
All right, and a roll call vote. Herb, bow and seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor. Thank you, Attorney Lawler. Sorry for all of your questions and concerns. Thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to appeal number, uh, where are we here? Uh, twenty twenty-two dash zero five three, uh, which was re-advertised Heather L. Riley and Charles E. Riley trustees have petitioned for a variance pursuant to section two forty dash seven G two setbacks from wetlands gra- uh, great ponds. The petition was proposed to construct an elevated twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot deck with a four-foot entrance located twenty-seven feet from a great pond where fifty feet is required. The subject property is addressed as thirty-six Holly Point Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map two three three as parcel zero three nine. The lot is located in the residence D one R D. The lot is located in the residence D-one, RD-one zoning district. Um, again, sitting on this will be all of our members present, Herb Bodensee, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Denise Johnson, and myself. Attorney Boudreaux, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, uh, my name is Mark Boudreaux, I'm here with Charles Riley, one of the two owners of the property. Wanted to give you a little bit of background, uh, this particular site was the home, uh, with the construction of a home in nineteen fifty-eight. At that time, it was one of only three properties on the entire Burris' Pond. Uh, back then, there were no requirements about how close you could build a property from the edge of water, and a lot of the properties. Uh, were built fairly close, including this one. The um, Heather Riley's grandparents purchased the property in nineteen sixty. They lived there for decades until uh, their daughter and son-in-law moved in to help them when they were getting older. And they ended up staying there, and now it's in the hands of the granddaughter Heather and her husband, uh, Charles, next to me. Uh, what they are looking to do simply is to complete a tear-down rebuild. As of right, they have the ability to tear down and build on the same exact um, foundation that was there. The old property had a deck to the side that was approximately seven by fifteen or sixteen feet. Uh, crumbling concrete, uh, that has been removed, it also somewhat violated the fifty-foot setback. In terms of the criteria for a variance, it's pretty straightforward, the uh, uniqueness is the topography of the building itself. You could not put a deck, oh, uh, more than fifty feet back because of the homes there. Um, it is something that my clients did not create, it was simply uh, how a building was allowed to be. Uh, placed and constructed, um, when that construction took place. In terms of a hardship, this is probably uh, would be one of the only properties without a deck on the back. Uh, looking at, we Quocket Lake. And in terms of any sort of harm to the neighborhood, there are two neighbors that could even see this, both of them have written letters in support. And the only other people that could see the deck were those that might be uh, swimming or boating on the lake itself. There was one letter that was introduced by a counselor, uh, indicating that um, the, the board and the town in general should be. Very wary of any disturbance within the fifty feet uh, of any great pond. Actually, this is quite an improvement, the structure that had been there had a uh, a tired driveway. And um, literally, you know, just a little crabgrass and nothing else, and uh, pretty much everything eroded into the the lake. My clients have gone through the Conservation Commission, and as a result, they have a plan. Uh, which I may, you should have, uh, which requires them to do a hundred and fifty-two plantings. In order to make sure that um, uh, the natural state of the area is maintained. And obviously, if you take a look at the uh, comprehensive nature of that, it severely limits their ability to use the backyard. So they're willing to sacrifice all of that work to get a relatively modest da- uh, deck. The back of the house is approximately fifty-two feet long, and what we're asking for is a twenty-four-by-twelve deck with a four-foot entrance. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and uh, my client's here as well.
All right, um, back to the board, the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, uh, Attorney Boudreaux, uh, I looked at the, uh, excuse me, yes, it's Paul, uh, I, I looked at the plans, how? How high off the ground is this deck?
Uh, it would come off of the, it's, there's a walkout there, it would come off the first floor, so it's approximately nine or ten feet off of the backyard.
Gotcha, thank you.
And I should also note that um, part of the requirements are that all of the water are coming off of the, the roof would be going into. Uh, drains, French drains, and the asphalt driveway has been replaced, and it's going to be a pervious surface. So quite an, quite an improvement from an environmental standpoint.
Do you have any other board members with questions? Denise, Aaron?
No.
Herb, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I was, I had issues with this initially, but then I saw that you have been through the uh, Conservation Commission. You have an order of conditions, so I think that would uh, alleviate any concerns I have. And hopefully, any of uh, Counselor Starr's as well, I don't know if he's here tonight. Um, but I, you know, I trust the Conservation Commission's judgment, for sure, thank you.
I I did forward to Counselor Starr a clear copy of the the um, the plan, which can be. Easily enlarged by pushing the plus button, and it chose uh, and delineates all of the hundred and fifty-two plantings that would be there. And it shows the drains as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in completely agreement with Herb, I read the uh, the uh, Department of Environmental Protection, um, you know, guidelines and so forth, and what they're asking. It sounds like the client is um, fully aware of those, um, you know, and what what it's gonna take to make this um. Doable, and uh, I don't see, um, I got nothing but positivity for this project, so.
I agree, I think, I think they really, I I like the idea they're gonna do these plantings, and, you know, I don't think it disturbs anything in the, in the area, and it should be approved.
Paul, any comment?
No, I I am, uh, I think the result will be better than what it is now, and I think that's important to uh, to recognize.
Okay. Um, all right, let's open for public comment here, um, we received a letter, we received several letters. Uh, one that's a reference from um, Counselor Starr. I'm gonna say in opposition or with a level of concern, um, that some have been discussed. Um, and then we did receive two other letters, one from. Jean Turnbull and Priscilla Myers at three fifty-one Huckins Neck Road, um, they were in support of the project. Uh, one from uh, Kevin Price and Sarah Schlackman, um, also in support of the project. Uh, I'm not sure what their address was, uh, forty, forty, right next door, um, to forty-six. And I believe that is all of the comments, Anna, did we receive anything else via mail?
No, you have everything right there. That's up to date.
Um, and, and then it looks like we have a few people in the room right now, they wanna speak to this, Diane Ver- Versher.
Yes, uh, Diane Versher, sixty-nine Holly Point, uh, totally in favor of it.
Thank you. John Carey? Emily Mizetti, comment?
Yeah, John Carey, you may have to unmute if you, if you intend to say something.
I have no comment, just interested, that's all.
All right, going once, going twice. Um, a motion to close public comment, I need a second.
Second.
All right, Denise, again, roll call vote, Herb Bodensee?
Favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
Favor.
And I am also in favor, so that closes public comment, brings it back to the board for deliberation, or someone wants to make some findings. Um, I guess just one comment I would make here, this is a variance request. Um, so we do follow the three-prong test here, so we just do have to, um, you know, make sure we kind of cover our bases, is, basis on this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Aaron, do you want him? Paul, go ahead.
Oh, you, oh, of the three-prong test, one of them is uh, hardship, I'd like to hear more about what. You know, what's the hardship here?
Sure, can I address that?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
I think when you look at hardship, it's denying someone the normal and usual ability to use their property. Uh, if you look around the neighborhood, literally, every single uh, property has an extensive deck, most, uh, much larger than this. They had one before that was also violative of zoning, but pre-existing, uh, non-conforming and grandfathered. And this is something that can be done, uh, without much detriment to the neighborhood. And as you heard, the property owners on both sides have no problem with it. Um, so this would be a, uh, something they, that um, certainly. If they didn't have it, they'd probably be the only one in the neighborhood without one, and I think if you go around a town, pretty much everyone has some sort of a rear. Deck and patio for privacy. The other side of it is, if you take a look at the topography, if they had no deck, they would have very little ability to use the entire back of their yard. If you take a look, a lot of it's gonna be full of, of plantings.
Paul, does that satisfy you, or you want further explanation?
Uh, I don't know, what I heard was, uh, the hardship is envy and um, and view, I I I don't know, I don't know where I am on this one.
Okay.
I think it's practical, I agree, I agree with the, the, uh, Attorney Boudreaux, that I think it's a, an expectation if you have a home on. A facing Lake O Quocket, and all your neighbors have decks, and they've accommodated the con- conservation issues. I mean, I I think we're just, you know, bringing them up to where everyone else is, and I don't see it as a, a major. Um, variance or requests for anything. I I think, it's not, I mean, in this world, can we call it a hardship? No, but can we call it a property owner's expectation? Yes.
Uh, Denise, be careful there, we're following a variance here. Uh, you know, we have to find that a literal, a literal enforced provision of the zoning ordinance would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, the petitioner. So we have to make sure we're finding that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how we define otherwise to the petitioner, other, other than, my opinion, I agree with Attorney Boudreaux in the sense that. The, you know, there was a pre-existing deck, we've all agreed that what's being done here is a improvement to the overall property, both. Uh, for the property itself as well as the environment, given the fact that the pervious and non-pervious uh, additions will help with runoff. And, you know, it is the only other way to put a deck on there, would be to move the house back, and that is a financial hardship. Uh, it's not feasible, as by right, they have a right to build a house on the current footprint, um, that is, you know, already existing, so. Um, I I can't allow us to get hung up on, I don't think, number two, in my opinion, I think it's, um, I don't mean hung up, but I think it's, it's, it's. You know, it's been proven that there, you know, again, substantial financial hardship, maybe, but it's, uh, otherwise, in my opinion, is the key word here, that, um, we would deny them. As a, uh, you know.
Well, it says financial or otherwise.
Correct.
To the petitioner, so.
All right, Herb, any other thoughts, or does someone wanna make findings?
I'll do, I I'll accept to do findings.
Go for it, Denise.
Okay, owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or to- topography. Of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Two, a literal enforcement of the presi- provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. To the petitioner, and desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying. Or substantially derogating from the ca- the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. Uh, an application for a variance has met all three requirements, uh, does not confer any legal right to a variance, the board still has the discretionary power. To grant or not to grant the variance.
So let's just make sure we, um. Can you hear me? Uh, can, let's just make sure we just check our boxes on, on, on one, we're, we're gonna say that the, both the shape and the topography of this lot are unique. Um, and then on two, I sort of came up with, um, you know, the, the existence of the deck is necessary, otherwise the. Um, the petitioner would have a hardship of not having a substantial part of their land wouldn't be usable, this is a, a way to utilize the land. Um, with a deck versus the, you know, to conform with conservation. Um, and then we did receive public comment, we don't have um, any abutters opposed to this, it seems like it does align with the abutting um, properties and structures. In a similar, um, similar nature, so it's, it's not substantially derogating from the intent purposely, the zoning ordinance. Um, so we need a second for Denise's findings?
Could I jump in, and I apologize for interrupting?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it really is the topography, not of the land, but of the structure. That is the uniqueness.
So the way the structure is constructed, then?
The, the topography of the structure into the setback, it's already there. So the, the statute reads that it's a uniqueness of the topography of the land or the structure. And it's a little bit of both, but I think the, the uniqueness is more because that, of right, that, that building already exists.
But the building's gonna be removed, a demo rebuild, correct?
It is, but it, it, what, what, uh, was there, uh, is still going to be there, so that same uniqueness in topography. It works either way, I just think it's a little bit more, uh, slightly more correct to say that it's the topography of the structure. Although both of them.
Why don't we just leave it at topography?
Okay.
Okay, um, so I need a second based on the findings and discussion.
I'll second that, Aaron.
Aaron, seconds, uh, so a roll call vote to approve the variance, um, as read by Denise and discussed. Uh, Herb Bodensee?
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Uh, Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
Favor.
And I am also in favor, uh, Denise, did you have some um, suggested conditions, or some conditions you wanted to propose?
Uh, we have some conditions here, the variance number. Two thousand twenty-two-zero-five-three from section two forty-dash-seven-G. Setbacks from wetlands, great ponds is granted to Heather L. Riley and Charles E. Riley trustees. To allow the construction of a twelve-by-twenty-four-foot deck with a four-foot entrance located twenty-seven feet. From a great pond where fifty feet is required at thirty-six Holly Point Road, Centerville, Mass. The site development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan entitled Proposed Project Site Plan. Sheet three, C-two-dot-zero, front by Baxter and I. Engineering survey date, June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, with the last revision date of September two, two thousand twenty-two. The above described deck shall represent full build-out of a lot, of a lot. No further additions or accessory structures shall be permitted without approval from the board. The decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Register, deeds and copies of the recorded decision. Shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Division prior to issuance of a building permit. The rights authorized by this variance must be exercised within one year unless extended.
Attorney Boudreaux, that's all acceptable?
Yes, they are.
All right, uh, so a vote on the conditions, Paul Pennard?
I, I approve.
Herb Bodensee?
Uh, I'm in pro- um, in approval.
Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor of the conditions.
And Denise Johnson? I am also in favor, uh, so Attorney Boudreaux, you have your variance.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, so moving on. Correspondence, the Cape Cod Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, uh, sorry, Thursday, February second, twenty twenty-three at three P M. To discuss the thirty-five Scudder residential community at thirty-five Scudder Ave Hyannis. Um, and I believe that's everything that we received. Is that, was there one other thing, or is that was it?
I think that was it.
Okay, um, upcoming hearings, we have February eighth, twenty twenty-three, February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Um, any matters, re- matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, Counselor Clark, anything to add or share with us?
No, thank you for your good work and your, um, your, um, thoughtful deliberation.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone have anything before we adjourn?
Are we moving in person anytime soon?
We will be in person.
Next meeting?
At the next meeting, February 8th.
And is that just, and then all the time or just next week, next week?
First meeting of the month was the plan. So February 8th in person, February 22nd online, March 8th in person, I believe. And is that how we advertise?
Except in March, March 8th will be via Zoom, because Channel 18 is relocating, and we cannot be in person. So that will be Zoom.
Okay. So February 8th in person, February 22nd Zoom, March 8th Zoom. And then we'll figure out after that. All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote. Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Herb Boden Sieg?
I guess I'm in favor, yes.
Aaron Webb?
I want to keep talking.
I'm in favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So we are adjourned. David, thank you.